Call the meeting to order of the City of Waverly Planning and Zoning Commission, January 5th, 2023. First item on our, second item on our agenda for this evening is roll call. Paige, could you help us with that?
Douglas Bensharder. David Larson.
Here.
Stephanie Garner.
Here.
David Huser.
Here.
John Meyer.
Here.
Kate Payne.
Here.
Kathy Olson.
Here.
All right. Working through our agenda here, the first item is approval of the agenda, item C from, for tonight, excuse me, January 5th, 2022.
23.
23. I read the agenda. That's funny. Yes, anyway, we have a, I heard a first.
Second.
So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approval of minutes from the December 1st, 2022, Planning and Zoning Mission.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. All right, for those of you with us here tonight, the first, or excuse me, section E, topic E, public hearing. So, we have a couple of these, just so we know how the process works here. So, the first item one is 912 Ashberry Drive will open a public hearing. Welcome any comments from the group. If you do address the commission, please step to the mic, state your name and address. Any comments can be heard. We'll close the public hearing, we'll have a discussion, and we'll do that for each of these, we have two, so we'll do those in kind of the order they are here on the agenda. So, the first item here, under the public hearing, is the special provisional use application for a roof mounted solar at 912 Ashberry Drive. And with that, I'll open the public hearing for that one first, if anyone's here to comment. Seeing none, oh, no.
We're the property owners of that estate, so if you have any questions, we'd like to answer them for you.
Okay. Perfect. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and let the commission discuss. Any questions, concerns?
Any comments from staff?
No public comments were received, and this is kind of a basic one, it's been being put on the back or south side of the roof, not going to face the street, no close neighbors or anything like that, so we have no objections to it.
Move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the special provisional use, the application to install a roof mounted solar system at 912 Ashberry Drive, waiver out to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, public hearing number two, I'll open for the special provisional use of a roof mounted solar system at 1523 10th Avenue Southwest. So, once again, if anyone has a comment or would like to comment, please approach the...
I'm the homeowner.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Joanne. We are very new to Waverly. We just purchased our home at the end of July, so hi. We moved here from Texas. I, we started this process as soon as we moved here. Being from Texas, we found out the extreme importance of having solar power. I won't get into it, but it is very forward thinking and taking advantage of this federal program. I'm sorry we're coming on the tail end of it, but I was disappointed to find out that we had previously put in a permit and you had denied us. My company had told me that. It had something to do with the barn and the garage and the chicken coop slash greenhouse on our property, something about that. I would have hoped that this group would have been at least, would have taken it on a case by case basis and would have looked at our property as a whole. My home was built in 1895. It, I have no idea when the barn was built, if, but it's pretty old, I can tell you that, which means potentially the house in the barn at some point could go in the historic registry. So, the idea of putting solar panels on these buildings could, could stop that, and I don't want to do that. At the same time, I want to be forward thinking of technology. Coming from Texas, we have watched energy costs go through the roof. I mean, most people's energy bills, which on average, when it is not 100 to 110 degrees, ran for a family of four for about $200. During the hot season, would go around $400. In this past year, because my daughters are still there, with the energy costs without having the solar, it has spiked to between $800 and $900. I have friends across the country who are experiencing the same thing. Getting the solar panels now in the state of Iowa is smart. My husband and I, 20 years from now, would like to retire. We will have these solar panels paid off by then. We will be feeding into the electrical grid. This is a smart choice. It helps businesses in the area. It helps other homeowners in the area. So, I have to be forward thinking about not only where am I putting it, how are we going about it in order to incorporate this? We have landscaping around our property, so this is not something where we had designated to originally put it was, yes, it would have faced the south, but it would have been next to 16th Street. But we have landscaping that would have hidden it. The only people who would have seen it would have been people driving on 16th Street and Fields. And nobody really cares in that area. And if they do do development, it's already established in there. And I would have hoped that this board would have recognized that, that having solar panels on a property that is over an acre, this wouldn't have hurt the property. As it stands right now, we're having to redesign and look at possibly putting it on this old barn and maybe the garage. So, I am asking you to, if you do approve, but also maybe go back and revisit and maybe take a look at my property as it is and see if there can be an exception made, just because we are on the edge of town. I mean, we're so far on the edge of town, they change the way they do the plowing by our house. We have yet to see a police officer uphold the speed limit. It is like the German autobahn by our house. They cross over 10th Street and floor it to see how fast they're going by the time they hit the gravel. So, I understand rules are rules, but sometimes exceptions can be made. And that's all. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me. I really appreciate being in your town.
Any additional comments from anyone here present? If not, I'll close the public hearing for this portion and put it to the commission for discussion.
I don't recall the action, this particular action, when it was denied, so I'm curious, when was this and on what grounds?
It did not come before this. When it came to me as zoning administrator, I looked at it compared to our code, and I reached out to Christine with Revolution Solar, who is their contractor, and I said, "This does not meet what our code is saying because ground mounted ones are required, same requirements as accessory structures." So, for the size of it, it did not meet that code section, and she said, "Okay, we'll go back and we redraw the plans." So, they went back and didn't ask anymore about the ground mounted, and they just switched. So, no, it never came to planning and zoning.
So, was it officially denied?
No. I just told her that it does not go with what our code is saying, and they decided to switch their plans.
So, the difference between this and what the original submission was is what?
The original was a ground mounted solar system that was located, if you got beacon pulled up, it would be to the west of that. It looks like a garage, a detached garage.
It, yeah, it was where the chicken coop and greenhouse was. We, there used to be some type of building in there that you can still see where the infrastructure used to be.
So, it would have been between the garage and 16th Street?
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, we don't...
16.
I mean, we, that becomes looking like an accessory building, subject to all those same setbacks, so, you know, that's the issue.
So, it sounds like just from our group, and I'd just make a couple of comments here, just kind of ad lib, but, you know, so we do look at these case by case, and we do kind of review these. With hearing that this didn't come before us from a city perspective first, I think, I just want to, I guess, say that we do review each of these on a case by case when it gets to the commission to see.
I'm so sorry. I got what he was, it came before you, and it's denied. So, I apologize, lost in communication.
I would make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this provisional, special provisional use application to install the roof mounted solar system at 1523 10th Avenue Southwest and refer it to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
All right, moving to regular business, section of our agenda here, we have a couple commission discussions here on, first being the plot of survey for parcel F. Paige, can you walk us through the memo on this one?
Yep, so, there, let me take a look. Iowa Maple Enterprises is the owner of a large parcel, as you can see on the plaque. They're wanting to parcel off just the whole set piece, and the owners of, or the registered agent of Iowa Maple Enterprises also owns that property to the north. So, they would keep that as their own.
So, this parcel F is where the existing house is?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Or a existing house.
A existing house.
So, my only question on this one is pretty minor, but I'll ask, you know, so it's currently residential, future shows ag open instead of residential. I mean, that's not a conflict of any kind that I know of, I guess, but, so, I guess I just...
I think the fact that there's a, that the house was adjacent to the road and the rest of it is really in the flood plain.
Right.
Really in the flood plain, it's in the water.
Right.
Is why we consider it differently that way.
Okay. So, and I guess the U1, does that go away in the future? I didn't realize.
The what?
The U1, or was it U1?
No, it's...
We're looking at parcel F.
It's, uh...
Yeah.
R1, so that parcel...
Currently.
For the dwelling, but he's talking about...
If you look at the future land use, like the U1 disappeared, so then I was just trying to figure out, again, it was just kind of a question from my side, did the U1 then go to ag one or open, or, again?
We're not getting rid of the U1 designation.
Oh, the future land use shows it as ag or open.
Which, because I don't think we use U1 on the future land use plan.
Right.
Right.
It just shows as open.
But it's not going.
It's not going away.
Okay. Anyway, it was just more of a staff question, I was just curious if there was a change there that I wasn't curious. Other discussions from the commission?
Is the idea here that if you break off the parcel F and you want to sell it, you can sell it separately and not have to deal with the rest of the property that's in the water that nobody wants?
Correct.
Right. You have to do a subdivision if you split it.
Right.
It's going to be less than an acre. So, I guess it's in the city limits, so never mind.
And it's in line with those houses right next to the same...
I'm assuming it's connected as...
It's actually 1.17 acres. It's just over an acre.
Yeah, I'm looking at the existing one beacon.
Sorry, I was looking at the plot of survey. More discussion or I'll ask for a motion?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the plot of survey for parcel F to City Council.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving to item two under regular business, it's a discussion on plot of survey of parcel UU and BV. Paige, can you walk us through that agenda?
Yes, so the owners are looking to redefine those two property lines. There's two lots existing, but they want to put the line straight to the east to create a more desirable building lot for a home in the future.
These lots have weird histories in there as I journey down this one. Any, what, any discussion on staff or...
Um, no, nothing we really had concerns about. They did change the line slightly, so then those buildings will be sure to meet the current setbacks.
Right, by foot.
Yeah.
Which is...
The additional smaller parcels were added separately before we were involved in this.
Right.
Because it was kind of strange that they allowed to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I have line of sight on this one, so it's kind of interesting. Anyway, more discussion from the commission here? Questions? The only thing I noticed too, again, just some of that zoning looks a little weird in the current, but then it, you know, it's going all to what, R1?
R1.
Or residential, I guess, for the future state, so it's certainly in line with all of them.
Okay, so in the, in the motion there, it's referring to plot of survey for parcel F?
I'm sorry about that.
In the agenda?
It should be for parcel UU and BV, so we'll make that correction when the motion is made.
I'll move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the plot of survey for parcels UU and BV to the City Council. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Moving to item three under regular business, this is a section on some corrections to three separate parts of the code. Paige, can you walk us through your agenda memo there?
Yeah, so there's been kind of a couple changes that staff has talked about to clarify some of these code sections and make it in line with what we're doing. I'm going to start with the third one, because that's the easiest. The accessory building and breezeway requirements, it's just changing that confusing language to state when the building is closer than 10 feet to the main structure, only the setbacks are changing. The size requirement is still the same as the accessory structure size, so that's the only clarification on that, section 100.4.06. M1, we are proposing to amend it to allow the self-storage units. And then C2, we're looking to, proposing to remove storage warehouses from the permitted use, but allowing the traditional kind of single storage, self-storage or mini-storage units as a special provisional use. Those we also propose to limit in the height that would be required. The other change is that multifamily residential structures would be a special provisional use rather than a permitted use.
On a C2.
On a C2, yeah.
So, I feel like this had some history from before. Is there anything that you guys would comment on, or is there...
The residential, not so, I mean, we want to kind of protect some of our prime commercial retail space, so I don't think the residential has had...
I think for the residential part of it, it was allowed because there's times when we have some pretty deep lots and things could be done behind, and we just want to make that a judgment, because we do make the comments about, you don't want it adjacent in the retail kind of window where the best place is for commercial operation, because if you do that, you really want to do a zoning change. And it's kind of like the apartments behind the, that's the farmer's bank and...
Off of Fourth Street.
Yeah, off of Fourth Street, where they put the apartment building in the far back that actually was on to Third Street, but didn't have access to Third Street, because the way it was plotted, there was a little strip of land that didn't let it be adjacent to Third Street. But I think it worked pretty well in those deep lots where they have commercial up front and they have a mixture of high density residential, and I think that just has to be what, we'd look at a site plan and say, "Yeah, it does fit." And the primary use of those lots up front by the, by the, adjacent to the road are going to be those retail developments that we want to see. With storage units, we had, we had an issue with the East Bremer, where there was a fairly large and tall storage units that were built adjacent to Bremer Avenue, and we didn't think that that really fit in those C2 highway type uses, so we want to keep that from happening, but not necessarily, if it's a deep lot again, you could have some self-storage in the back that would be, let the retail be up front. So, we really want to allow it to happen where there's good reasons for it, but not when it lines the corridor of your community.
So, item number 12, that proposed piece in there, does that address the issue we had probably a year ago?
Yes.
With regard to the granite or the...
Right, the countertop.
Counter-tap.
And we really wanted to say, if it's a small scale final production of consumer products, that as long as it doesn't emit noise, odor, smoke, vibration, excessive truck traffic, then that is basically what we're looking at to be included within that C2, because a lot of times, and it also required an onsite sales showroom for the public, so it's all in one, so you don't have to have your production place somewhere else and have a separate building for that kind of a use. So, we really want to emphasize that if you're doing, if you're just manufacturing, you might as well do it somewhere else.
Yeah.
But if you want to also advertise and solicit the public, then you can be in a C2 for that reason.
I'm happy to see that, isn't it?
Why are you happy to see it?
Why am I happy? Because I felt that the way we, the way that ended up was, I didn't feel it was a good decision.
Well, you know, I think clarifying the code is always good, and I think in cases when zoning changes like that one was, right, that's, that's not a guarantee. If it's zoned that way already, this is a use it can be. In the cases where zoning is applied to change, that you shouldn't expect rules to apply either, so I think it's, it's, makes sense in this section.
It needed clarity.
This way.
For that way at the time.
Two through, two through eight, we tried to use general descriptions of types of things, instead of trying to name every single possible retail use you could put in a commercial zone, which kind of gets you in trouble, because if they're 100 years old, then you start looking at billiard parlors and things that don't really apply anymore, and I think it's better to just look at whether it's service establishments or retail sale or food and beverage, that kind of thing. So, we're, we're going to do probably more of this, but we really wanted to clarify this, because it's probably going to be another year before we get, if we do the zoning review, that may change things again, but hopefully just clarification, kind of like we've started.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I mean, it seems very limited in scope for these few changes, but, you know, there's kind of the scrapbook list of several others, right? Is this something we're going to see more of, or is it going to be composited or compiled into?
We're going to try to do that. I think what we're seeing in more zoning codes now are going to descriptions of the type of establishments, as opposed to trying to name everything that's already there and that you can figure, could be there, because that really doesn't work. And some of those have kind of evolved beyond what might, you might want in a true commercial district with automobile access.
And that's the goal of next fiscal year, is kind of do a big overhaul of the zoning and subdivision codes.
So, the idea of putting these other things under special provisional uses is that we, they don't just automatically get okay, they have to come across this group and then they also have to go through City Council?
No.
Board of Adjustments, okay.
We think there's times when those things can happen and should happen.
But you want to have an opportunity to discuss it first.
And reasons why we don't necessarily want a warehouse adjacent to Fourth Street instead of retail, because I think there's a good justification for that. If you put your warehouse in the back and it's adjacent to a retail use in front, it's a different situation.
Sure, I was, I was imagining a situation where the back might be adjacent to residential properties, and therefore you might not want a bunch of storage units back there.
And there's greater setbacks for that, too. There's 25-foot setbacks.
Sure, but still, it's, that's why special provisional use makes sense, because you can do it on a case by case basis.
Right.
I think that that makes sense.
Good, I don't have any other discussion points. Does anyone else on the commission? I ask for a motion?
I would move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of these ordinance amendments as they're listed to the City Council.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion still passes, I don't, it sounds like you got that, you don't need a roll call vote for that, sounds good. Next item, under the comprehensive plan update, is one that will take some discussion, I think. But, I don't know, who wants to speak the most about this, I guess, but Paige, why don't you kick us off and we'll kind of jump in as we go here?
Yeah, so we're hoping to near the end of the draft and action steps. Mostly everybody was at the meeting we just had with MSA, and I know they've got some representatives here tonight as well, and we went through page by page of that plan update, so hopefully, once they get those changes made, that we would all be comfortable with that. Action steps, I had to step out for a little bit at the end of that meeting, so I'm not sure if those got squared away, that needs some more discussion.
Right. Shannon or Jim, you guys want to jump up and kind of tell us where we are timeline-wise? You know, I think we had a great discussion here at 5:30, but...
Yep, sounds good. Shannon...
Shannon Gap with MSA, we also have Emily and Jim with me. We apologize that Chris Jansen isn't able to attend tonight, he had other commitments. But we did want to give a quick update. We did receive some comments and edits from Paige, and we've gone through those updates. But we do know this is still very much a draft, which is why you can see why draft is written kind of all over the document. It's flexible to change still. But we, some of the bigger edits that we had was adding an appendix, the hazards section, which talks about critical facilities, natural resources, natural disasters, so and so forth. And we also know that the action plan is very much a work in progress, which is why we have that Google documents currently that anyone can access, add comments. And if you have any ideas on action steps, we're happy to incorporate them into the plan. We do hope the goals and strategies are a little more appropriate. We'd confirm whether those make sense for the community. But we did want to further coordinate those actions prior to going to council. Emily has also put together some posters. I have them on my computer if we want to hook them up, but otherwise she can just talk through them. Either way is fine with me.
Do we want to, those are the summary posters?
Yep, so there's one on new development, downtown and redevelopment. I don't know if you guys have seen them yet, but-
I'd like to see them.
Yeah, maybe not.
I'm assuming I just hook it up over here?
Where's your IT guy?
Well, that's what I was going to ask, do we just do it to B?
Yeah.
Flip your little switches to B, then you'll see it on your computer.
And that latest draft of the comprehensive plan is uploaded off the project for us.
Did you hear, if you flip it to B, it goes- No, I was just bringing out my notes. Okay. John, did you hear that? If you flip your selector.
You don't have any control. Only she has control.
You're out of control.
So the first poster is new development. We have the future land use, the land use categories, and then the matrix on there. And then there will be process of development steps, too. Just so anyone looking at those in reference and have an idea of kind of that process.
Can she get to a microphone?
Oh, yeah, I can get it.
Can you hear me now? Is it on?
Yeah, just set it down.
Okay. I will zoom in. So I can kind of look through this. Land use categories with the pictures and the descriptions. Those will be updated if need be, based on any of the edits to the plan.
Are you sure the mic's working, because I can't-
Oh, yeah. Speak up.
Is this loud enough? Good, okay. So we have the matrix down at the bottom, and then the process of development, which I'm still adding, will just be a few steps for people that want to know kind of what that process looks like with a brief explanation. And then there's information, well, the phone number and who to reach out to with questions. The second poster is downtown, and it highlights your historic districts, has those outlined. And then this goes through design guidelines for buildings and sites, as well as streetscape guidelines, just some brief summaries of if you want to develop in Waverly, kind of not quite standards, but good development practices of what should go into a downtown area to fit into what is currently in place. Or if you do get standards coming in, kind of what you would like things to look like for the new developments in the downtown areas. So I can zoom in on that for you. As you can see, each of the districts is outlined and labeled. Guidelines, if you don't like any of the pictures or the formats or anything, we can always change those. And the last poster is redevelopment. So this goes through kind of that transformative chapter that is in the comprehensive plan. It highlights where those projects are currently taking place or where they will be with the pictures as well as the descriptions. And then a few of the goals that are relevant. So if someone does want to come in and develop or redevelop, they can say, hey, this is what Waverly is looking to do. My plan, what I'm interested in doing also matches up with Waverly's goals. Zoom in on that.
Go back to the map. What's number 10?
That's the DOT.
Oh, that's, and that's going to be south.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay. It's, it's out of the map, actually.
Okay, great. Okay, so we can upload those, too, if you guys want to go through and leave comments for those as well.
Yep, we can put those right on the project website for anyone to review.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was an action item out of our last discussion. You know, I know we kind of talked about summary posters, so I mean, I think it's, seeing them for the first time, I mean, I think it's, it warrants a review, right? Because some of the same themes, as you mentioned already, Emily, that some of the pictures were commented in the other meeting already. So there's obviously some edits there that are needed, I think, in parallel to the other work.
Yep.
So can, one of you guys speak to us, just refresh us on the timeline. You know, here we are in January, where do you want to be in February, March, et cetera, with the project here? Like, if we miss city council, for example, does that throw you totally off track because of some of these edits that we brought up? I'm just trying to gauge.
I definitely think we do want to make the edits before the city council, so we are happy to make them. We want you to feel comfortable when they get to go to council, so we understand that.
So I hate to be the timeline guy, but-
Well, so it was, it was projected, depends if we made a recommendation tonight, that it would go to council as a big review session at their study session in January. They wouldn't make an action item until the first meeting in February. So I don't know if we can still bring it back to P and Z in the first Thursday of February for our recommendation after the changes have been made, maybe if we're more comfortable with that.
February 2nd.
What's the- What's the-
When? 9/16/23.
23rd.
Is that before or after?
That would be before or next.
Before or next P and Z?
Yeah. Our next P and Z meeting would, is scheduled for February 2nd.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the big picture, I don't remember exactly what the timeline said.
So if you're going to meet again on February 2nd, we'll have, we'll have had the work session with the council. You'll have had the opportunity to basically finalize, you've seen the final edits by the 2nd. You could, you could then recommend approval to the council for their next council meeting. So we would still be, just in the timeline up here.
And so we intend to put a, and have a public hearing set for the 6th.
Can we bump it back to the 20th? I just wonder, because we'll probably want to have the agenda memo and documents updated with P and Z's recommendation. The 6th is only two business days after P and Z's recommendation, I don't know. I'll talk to Carla and James to see if that would be okay still, to try and keep that deadline or timeline that we had talked about.
Otherwise, it'd have to be two weeks later from the 6th.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I think the feedback I've been gathering here is, as you said, Shannon, is kind of, I think we want to recommend the best final document to city council. We don't, nobody's real comfortable, I guess, with the placeholders and some of the other edits that are needed. So it's, it's just challenging to navigate that, I guess. I think it's a good discussion on timing of how it all fits. So there will be a public hearing? Run that by me one more time, how's that work?
Yep, so council level will be a public hearing. So we had it on the placeholder for January 16th for council to set a public hearing for February 6th.
I see.
I will confirm that that's still okay with P and Z not recommending action until the 2nd, and just to make sure that turns out okay for-
All right. Any other comments from you guys? Are you guys good?
Not that I can think of, but feel free to send comments, we're happy to make updates.
I guess, to me, you know, this, I haven't been part of this process from the beginning. I came in, you know, at the beginning of the year, or middle of last year. But, you know, it's a 20-year plan. If it gets delayed a couple of months, it's not the end of the world, in my view. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't see it that way. And I am not prepared to vote on recommending to the council until I see a final document. And I'd certainly like to see, you know, the action steps that Bill was talking about tonight, to get incorporated. I'd like to see those, all the placeholders filled. If there are photographs that need to be done, fine, get them. If you don't have a photo, take the box away, you know, I mean, so we have a final, final document. I mean, that's what I want to see to vote on, to send off to the city council.
Yeah, we would love for you to give us action steps on that document that we had shared previously. Nobody, well, I guess Dave, you said you had sent it to Paige. But that was the only one that we had received or potentially received, so more, more input from you guys would be-
And I think, if I can jump into it for a minute.
Go ahead.
On the action plan specifically, I know we kind of discussed that, you know, planning and zoning was going to do the land use, right? But some of those other tabs were some of the other commissions, right? I mean, we weren't on the-
I think we're kind of supposed to do a lot of them, but I know we're talking with some other staff members to try to-
I think what we were saying is, we didn't want everybody to think they had to do every bit of every-
Right.
-section, and that we wanted feedback from everybody that-
Okay.
Whatever they could do.
But ultimately, it's on this commission, too.
And then we can combine those inputs.
All right.
And, you know, and we did, we got, I mean, we struggled with the two of staff, because when we looked at it, what we saw was a lot of the strategies that then had action items that were basically things that we do all the time anyway. And so we wanted to talk about things that we wanted to do as far as projects or actual actions that we would take, as opposed to knowing that we do development review on seven different strategies. So it, you know, we do it, the commission does it. You review those subdivisions, you review zoning things, you do all those things. And staff does it as a, on a case-by-case basis, and then plots come to you, too. So it's all a process. But there were some things that we wanted to do as action items to be done in the next two, couple, two to three years especially, and for the, and for council to consider. We actually have two of those things that we're going to be presenting to council already in this budget. But beyond that, those are just the zoning and subdivision things that we had already talked about.
So I guess, I don't know how to move the needle on that one. And I'm afraid we might get to the same.
Point excellent. So it appears that MSA has already actually put some more items in the action plan, some action steps. And so those were helpful, once we saw those, they kind of gave me an idea of this might be what they're looking for. So I think if everybody as a commission can go through and help add those in, we'll get ours over to, should we send them directly to Shannon, or who should go to the ch-
Shannon, to me, I'll send Blanca and Emily to some of the groups as well.
Okay, so we'll get them sent over, and maybe they can get those updated, and then you guys can look at where we're at with all the updates we've discussed tonight.
I did say it tonight, that we can send that list that we're going to send over to the-
Oh, yeah, we can copy everybody in on that, that's fine.
So you're looking for items under column C in the Excel file, right?
The action item tree.
Yeah, so I think it's goals, objectives, and then actions.
Their strategy is defined by, I don't know what they, what those are exactly. Then there's a description, and then there's actions, short-term, long-term, potential change partners and notes.
Yes, but they're-
The actual actions.
You're looking for some suggestion on actions associated with each of the strategies.
Yes.
And if you have, if you know of or think of partners that should be involved in those actions, if there's local community organizations that are nonprofit or whatever that might be.
And I know, on the one I did, it's like some of the other stuff, you know, if it involves economic development or downtown or something, you know, there's other commissions for that. And so that's where I kind of put the partner-
Yep.
Yeah, you're right.
And that's kind of, again, I, my bad, I only did the land use one, so there's more to it.
And frankly, we thought that-
I know, I only did the last one.
We thought that there was a lot of the strategies that could be just answered the same way on the whole page, where you'd say, the development team, and we consider the team, again, commission, staff, that kind of thing. And that they were not, they were just ongoing things. And so I kind of wanted to stick with the things that were an action item, that we wanted to have a target date to do those. And that they'd be specific actions that either we're not doing well enough, or we should expand, or we should change the way we're doing something, as opposed to doing what we already do. So if you felt like we're already doing that, there wasn't any action plan that was needed.
Yes, no, I think we absolutely want to make these actions specific to the community. No one knows the community better than those who live there, so obviously you guys are great. And then the familiar area with planning and zoning, I think you guys are well-intentioned, kind of help guide that process.
So, so do you see it condensing a lot, Bill? I'm trying-
I, I do, and I was going to actually have a conversation about that, because I kind, I kind of felt like, the way we did it was, we kind of looked at those 10, 12, 14 things that we'd like to see happen in the next five to 10 years. And then kind of identify whether it's right away or, or can wait. I mean, it's really kind of that, do we want to work on it right away, or do we want to say, in three to five years, we're going to really make sure this happens? Those are the two, we ended up with three, I think, instead of four.
Sometimes we do like short-term, midterm and long-term recommendations.
That's kind of what we start to articulate.
Yes.
So we'll work again as staff, and we want them to give you direct feedback, but you can also send us feedback, and we'll try to incorporate it into what we're doing. Not that we're trying to, we just want to, we just have ideas, what we have, and we want you to have ideas. Or comment on our ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I'll certainly give it another go. I struggled a little bit with the Google Doc, but that's why I just sent what I sent.
Yeah, anyone, if you want to send a Word document or markup media, whatever is easiest for you guys, we're happy to take comments, or it works best for you.
Yeah, I struggled with the structure of that. You know, being so many steps, you know, and so if that gets revamped and changed, I think that's a step forward.
I thought a lot of the strategies were just expanding on the goal. I mean, just kind of doing more detail on the goals, as opposed to, you know, a strategy. It was just kind of part of the goal itself, explaining what the goal was.
Well, and I think each strategy is mentioned in the plan, though, too. So that's where you got them all, right? So they're all just-
Yeah, they're from the other document.
Right, of the plan, so it's whether we have an action item for that specific strategy.
Yeah, so I, I think if that's condensed, and that really becomes, as you say, kind of like the sprint, right? I mean, here's your five that you want to do in the short term, here's the next group, next group. You know, if that is kind of highlighted in that, I think, A, it could simplify the feedback you'd get greatly. And I think it would make it a better composite of the action steps.
Yes, and I think once we have everything compiled, it'll be a lot more user-friendly the way it'll get incorporated into the document.
So I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion.
Or do we just ask to table it to the next meeting? Because we don't want to not recommend, in case I'm bad.
The way you're doing it, you can table it to the next meeting.
Okay, I think that, yeah, open the book.
Well, we had a motion on there.
It's in a gen item, yes. Okay, so I can review the book here, but I will, I guess, ask that we table this.
Well, if you want a motion, I'd move to table it until the next meeting, next regular meeting. And we'd be given an update at that time.
All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. We will table that until February. And unless anything else has changed, there's no old, new business. So I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
And move that we adjourn.
Go.
Kathy, so move.
Tell me why, when I click on these, the spreadsheet. I don't... You got the spreadsheet?